Yeah, thank you. Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 1st, 2017. At Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers 910, South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Regarding the items of business according to the agenda list to be below. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll have an invocation of Pastor Mike Cervantes with New Hope Church. And if you'll stay standing, we'll do the pledge of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
I'd like to invite you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, that you're so good to us, Lord. And in times past, and in times present, and we know in times future, your great compassion and your mercy will follow us. I thank you, God, that you have always appointed leaders, God, that are generous and full of grace. And even in times when we didn't have the best of leadership in our world, Lord, you set things up in a way that they would benefit us. And I pray, Lord, that today we would honor you, we'd make you proud, and, God, no matter what the discussion is, that we would be people of peace, that people could leave this place knowing that you were with us. We know you're everywhere, but we invite you into this place to be here, and we humbly accept that gift, God, the gift that you give us every day, to be a family, to be a community, to be a people who walk along aside one another. We thank you for your goodness and your grace. We thank you that we get to gather right here in this place, and we celebrate this moment, God, because it's a gift. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) Item four, communication from the public to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen's comment period. Trish Hanks, and then Sandy Santos Venegas. Did I say it right?
Thank you for letting me address you. I think all of you know that I'm about to retire in just a couple of months. I want to stand over here, but it still picks me up. And I just wanted to come in and thank all of you for your service to our community. It's not easy to be a volunteer. I know that. What's the matter? We're going to turn it down?
Jeff, can you fix this?
Thank you. I could whisper it and still...
We've got new audio. You keep going.
So, anyway, I just wanted to come. I want to take your time. I wanted to thank you. Can I approach you with a little gift?
Yes.
I have a book. I have a candy bar. I have a note for each of you that I wrote for you personally.
Thank you, Trish.
And I just want to thank you all for everything that you do, for our community, for our school district. And we wouldn't be the district or the community we are without people like you willing to stand up and put yourself out there.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Oh, and her back here.
Yeah, thank you. Now, don't get each other's, because they might be...
You don't want to see my note from Trish Hanks.
Don't you show anybody my note. My... This is Jeff.
I thought you were giving a success.
There's a book there. Schools can't do it alone. And I'd really like you to read a couple of chapters. Be sure you read the Blumerie story part of it sometimes. But seriously, you've all... Everybody got them, right? You've all contributed in so many ways, big and small, from building at Abar to being a STEM advisor, to doing multiple things, buying grants, building furniture, trophy pictures, you name it, not a damage. Fixing the field for the lacrosse team. I mean, so many things that you do personally that most people don't know about. And you're volunteers, and I don't know that you hear enough or often enough, thank you for everything that you do. I know it's not easy serving the public. I read social media, although I swear I'm not. But other people do, and they tell me, and it's not easy. But, you know, and you shouldn't always agree, because if you do, you're probably not serving your community well. But you should always respect one another for the fact that you're giving of yourself and you love this community, and you're doing the best you can, and you're all smart individuals. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for, on behalf of FISD and for me as the superintendent, thank you for those 15 years of support. And I just, you know, say, I'll be around, and so maybe I'll sit out here and tell you what to do. I don't know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your kindness, Trish.
There's a candy bar in there, too, if you have a long...
Santos?
And Mike, you did get Milky Ways, and nobody else got that.
Can we take a short recess?
You're that. Recession.
You know, Tom and Helen are here, too, are school workers.
I don't have any presents. Sorry. Pass this down.
Bad luck.
Thank you for your time for allowing me to address you this afternoon. My name is Santos Venegas. I live in the Eagles Point subdivision, and my topic is the usual, the rezoning of Howard subdivision, which has been pulled, and we're aware of that. We don't know what's going to happen, but I wanted to pass this along that I pulled from the city's comprehensive plan, where it pretty much puts us in a position where it says that we shouldn't get rezoned, or there should be some considerations before it does happen. Also, I wanted to communicate to you fine gentlemen that there was some communications from Mr. Travis Bryce, that Mr. Travis Bryce does not represent the homeowners association. The board is divided on that stance, and we don't, you know, his communication should have never came to you. And I realize that this is a moot point, but I did want to point that out. The homeowners association is divided on that, and everybody's got individual efforts. So, thank you for your time, and enjoy that little piece of reading.
Work session, item A, 5A. Patrick? You going to do both of them?
Yes.
Okay. You want to do... Well, go ahead and do both of them at the same time, then. Save us some time.
All right. Okay. So, we're already in there. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, Council. As I do each month, I go over to our capital project update. For those of you in the audience who are watching at home, I'll go through the various projects and the stages of construction where they are. The first project that I have is our fire stations. We have two under construction, fire station, the Kenneth Camp Fire Station and... The first one I'll talk about is a fire, is the Kenneth Camp Fire Station, okay, at 1610 Harold Werter Drive. This is a picture from just outside the PSP parking lot. As you, as you may notice, the green fence that was up, that was shrouding the front, is now gone. You can't see it very well in this picture, but a bunch of trees have been planted over in this area, along with some trees in this area. And I would say the front is very far along in the construction. The second view is from, I guess, I would say, the backside of the PSP. And the reason I showed this is an item that we have talked about with American Tower. Obviously, the tower is right there. There's some buried lines that go underneath here that are fairly shallow and in conflict with our storm sewer. We've been in contact with American Tower for some time now. Arnold has had some, some very good conversations, and the deadline for them to move their stuff is Thanksgiving, 2016. So, where we're at today, Arnold's had some recent conversations, including giving them the dollar amount for our contractor to have to remobilize if they don't relocate. As you can see, there's no way that this parking lot can get from point A to point B. The drainage infrastructures that are in there can't get from point A to point B. So, we're still working with them, and we'll kind of see how that goes.
Are they responding? No. Joe?
As Patrick has alluded, there were conversations that took place just prior to Thanksgiving of last year. It appeared encouraging at that time that they were going to be compliant and would mobilize to see that the scope of work was completed. And in fact, I was assured by their own attorney that that was going to happen. But those appear to have been empty promises, so to speak. And in order to see that this project is timely done, we may need to make some hard decisions about what we're going to do.
Who, besides your attorney, who corresponded with?
There's a fellow, you know, remind me, Alejandro?
There's a couple of different gentlemen, and kind of where we're at, they have the conduit underneath, or they have conduit going lower where they need to. And what we've been told is they're waiting on the FCC to get clearance to disconnect the line, to then reconnect the line. And we've been waiting for FCC for, in essence, of six months.
Roger, would you call me tomorrow? I've got the president's number. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, our next picture is of, this is the store casing, or the front casing of it. This is one of the few items that they have remaining, other than the parking lot. As you walk down the halls, this is straight in that front door. You may notice the fresh coats of paint, the plastic over the doors, just so they don't get messed up, the paper on the, on the newly installed flooring. This is one of their meeting rooms, one of the executive meeting rooms with the TV on the wall. This is the large meeting room. By now, I'm sure they already have flooring all throughout this area. Throughout different halls, you have different, different offices. These are examples of the day captain, fire chief, EMS, EMS assistant chief, dorm, and there, there are a few others, but only so, so many make the cut, I guess. From the top, this is the rooftop, kind of shows all the different apparatus they have up on top. So, you may ask, what are we waiting on? We're mainly waiting on the, on the parking lot and their stuff. And fire station's going, going real well. Fire station number four, they're 111 Woodlawn. This was reached substantial completion. This is a picture from the, I guess, the, the living area of the old, the old portion, looking down into the added-on portion. Another, another view from the bays looking in. This is an example of which, of one of the rooms. This is the exterior, as it, as it matches the existing brick. Last picture is of the roof. So, like I said, they had the walkthrough, and there was very minor on the, on the punch list items, and they'll be moving in and starting to use that in the near future. By the time we meet again, they will, they will be in their, in their place. The next thing is the Centennial Park Basketball Pavilion. As you may notice, the substantial completion date is March 31st, and yet you have not received an agenda item. We are waiting on a few minor things. We worked through one of them with the NEC electrical code, their MEP engineer, our building code folks. We've worked through that issue. There is a couple items, and I'll go to this last picture. On here, there's some padding that goes around the, each one of the goals. That needs to be properly adhered to. Right now, if you were to go out there, you'd see some blue tape, and obviously, that's not how they're supposed to look. The final thing is there's some, there's some base rim work on, on one or two of the columns, and from that perspective, all of their pencilless items are done. The final thing is the windstorm certification. The windstorm certification, they do have a PI-1, and that was done approximately 10, 10 or 15 days ago, so we're just waiting, which it takes about 10 days to get your PI-8, and therefore, you have your windstorm certification for the roof. So, we're just waiting for the finalities of that. I would anticipate being here in, in June with an, with an agenda item to successfully accept that. One item you may notice is, and you don't see it on this, on this picture, is there has been a substantial amount of dirt. Contractor is going to come back and clean all that off before final acceptance.
Andrew?
Yeah, I was going to... Go ahead.
Is it being used right now?
It is still under the jurisdiction of the contractor. However, there, at any given time, you can see several people out there.
And, and when it's complete, what's going to be the rules in terms of getting on it? Is there a sign up, or is it first come, first served, or how's it work?
That would be a better question for James. I do know it's a... Well, I'll let James answer all the logistical questions.
Yes, sir. Parks and Recreation Staff is working...
Currently, right now, putting rules together. We've got our first draft, and we're waiting for review from the company.
Waiting on the draft?
No, we've got our first draft.
I'm not drafting people. Gotcha.
He did.
I wanted to ask a question on, on the pavilion. Is there a one-year maintenance bond or something that they... It'd be like a street? It'd be like anything that...
Like any, like any other construction project, there's a one-year maintenance bond, just like a subdivision. So, obviously, we maintenance, there is wear and tear that may occur. Maybe some of the lines aren't as crisp as the day they were painted. Those aren't necessarily covered. If the column starts falling down, or something along those lines, or, or without an act of God, portions of the roof start peeling off, those are all considered warranty items. I'm using example is not necessarily what they're going to happen.
That thing is sturdy looking.
Yes, sir.
Nice job. Okay. Councilmember Estefson?
That's probably a better question for James. I went through there, I don't know, a week or so ago, and, and it's probably 10 o'clock, maybe a little after, and the lights were... And I don't know what time. I'm sure you got them programmed to go off at a certain time. But even at that, they were pretty bright. And I don't know, have we had anybody complaining, or, or call, or say anything about it from the road behind?
Thus far, we've had none but compliments from the visiting neighbors.
It's a nice facility. I'm just concerned somebody may... What are the hours it's going to be?
The lights are programmed to go off at 11:00 PM, and the park closes at 11:00. So...
So, that's why.
Yep.
All right. All right.
I believe there was, where there was one person that, that did call in complaining about the lights, but it was more along the lines of it was a little bit later, and our lights had gone out, and lights of vehicles were being used to illuminate the basketball pavilion.
Okay. Okay. Because, you know, after 11, and they were waiting to complain till then, I suppose. That's fine.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Thanks, James.
Next project is our street bond project. Contract time getting fairly close. If you've been out there lately, we're, we are on the final street. We're on winding, winding road. I'm going to take you a path, starting at Melody, working our way back. This was one of, one section. It was originally poured about two weeks ago. I say originally. Looked at the radar, radar looked good. Next thing you know, somehow, we're getting a really good rain. The contractor realized that, realized it was in his best interest to go ahead and break it out the very next day while it's still nice and, nice and green. He was able to get it out, yank it out, and, and do what he needed to do. So, that, that portion that I show up on the screen, or just recently, has already been poured. This is an example of some of the driveways that have been poured. You see one, two, three, there are several driveways along here. The contractor is moving along to get the driveways and get the road as possible as, as soon as possible. This is a portion just east of the bridge, and working our way towards Riverside Court. I imagine this has already been lined and getting ready for, getting steel and getting ready to be poured. This is a portion, this is Riverside Court here. One of the things that we've been working on is a, is a smaller change order to address some pawning issues there on Riverside Court. All of this drainage, and if you've been out there, you may notice that, hey, there's not many catch basins. A lot of that drank, a lot of that water, the majority of that water travels down Riverside to the catch basin at the end of Riverside Court. There's a couple panels where they've sunk in a little bit, and the change order would be to remove and replace those sections so that we're not creating issues on existing pavement that wasn't part of the project, but yet would be significantly impacted by the project.
Do you have any idea what that's going to cost?
That's going to cost 13, 30, 40, about $40,000. That would do the first two panels and the catch basin at the end, changing the inlet. If you went out there, you saw it's a fairly small inlet like this. We're changing it out to a BB inlet. For those of you at home, BB inlet is much larger, allows the water to get in the throat. We're not changing out the pipe. The pipe's a 24-inch pipe. It's a direct shot to the creek. One of our thoughts, and our thoughts of our engineer as well, is that it's more a matter of getting water into the pipe. The pipe has never probably been at full capacity just because of it, you can only pour so much water into it, and it's, it's just not going to get to it. The BB inlet changes that out, allows more water to get to it and get it out, get it out quicker. The, the next process is, we, we came to you earlier, and we have a, we have a consultant working on the plans for Woodlawn Avenue. They have completed the plans. One of the things that we wanted to explore was getting a bid from the existing contractor to continue the work as a change order. And, and I'd like to ask council if they would like to entertain this idea. The, the, we have got our price back from the contractor. It would allow us to complete Woodlawn from FM 2351 to Shadow Bend, and the price for that work would be $483,000. What that would allow us to do would be allow them to start now, and then, as far as school is impacted, the bus barn is located off of Woodlawn. It would be minimally impacted, maybe the first couple of weeks of school, as opposed to a good chunk of the construction. So, I guess what I was, what I'm asking, Mayor and Council, is, is it permissible that we bring an item back for council's approval at the next council bidding for this project? A couple of questions that you may ask at that dollar amount is, A, is it within the change order amounts of the project that we currently have under, under construction? The answer to that is yes. And rough, the, the original contract amount was $2.46 million, with the change orders to date, change orders to date are roughly $17,000. The change order that we're working on for Riverside Court would bring it up to roughly In addition to the 483, would bring us to a grand total of 400, $543,000 of the allotted amount. The allotted amount is $615,000 available per change order. Now, the second question you may ask is, how does that go in line with the money that was allocated as per the bond? Per the bond, $400,000 was allocated for the construction and design for the project. Roughly, the, the project was, the design is $82,000. So, that would leave you with roughly 300 and something thousand to do the construction. So, this amount at 200, at 483 is over that. If we were to stay within the confines of the bond allocation, we could do one of two sections. The section that would need it worst would be, and actually, this is the wrong picture. I apologize for that, would be the section from Shadow Bend to Heritage, just past Heritage. This is the second section, which is just past Heritage, to FM 2351. We do have funds available in our street maintenance, and they could, that could very well be used to cover the, cover the balance.
What I heard was, we're 20, to do this, we're 25% over what was allocated. Am I right? 80,000, 84,000?
84,000.
Yeah.
In construction dollars. Yes, sir.
Are we getting lower bids?
They are, they are slightly lower, but not by a lot. One of the questions we ask, because, hey, price of concrete has gone down. Contractor that we're working with, he's not necessarily seeing all of that, all of that savings. One thing he did say was they didn't put the escalator in because the project's over a year. So, typically, and you know this, they, if a concrete company can use the escalator, they will. And because the prices have gone down, they're not. Could we potentially get a better bid later? There is a potential for that. I want to say when we, when we sat down with the contractor, with the consulting engineer, their estimate was over what the bond monies would have allocated as well. So, I guess the way, the way I kind of see it, just my view, we could potentially wait and go out for bids and have every contractor look at it and do it, and it would impact school bus routes at a, at a greater intensity, and we can't necessarily guarantee a lower price. Or we could go with this, with this price, and do a change order next month to keep moving with this. If, if council would prefer that we keep within our, within our means, we could do the first phase and, and stop at that point. The first phase, the, the numbers we have for that is roughly 301,000, which with the engineering contract money is 82, is underneath the $400,000 that was allocated for this project.
Is this in the scope of the project? Was this in the original scope?
From Shadow Bend to 2351, yes, sir. That was all in the scope.
Okay, so the reason we're having this discussion is because it's $84,000 over what was allocated?
Eighty-four plus the design costs.
Of 40, was it 30 and so?
I want to say it was, it was closer to 70.
70?
Yes, sir.
I'd rather we... Go ahead, Mo.
I was just going to add to what Patrick said. The reason you're having the discussion is you have the opportunity to, opportunity to accelerate the project by a month. If council wants to wait for lower prices, by all means, we can definitely go out for bid. If you want to stay within budget, we can do the first phases, Patrick suggested, but this wasn't a matter of exceeding budget that we brought this to you. This was an opportunity to accelerate.
Oh, okay. Now, now it's clear for me.
Sorry, I didn't.
Well, let, my inclination would be to stay within budget.
Okay.
Give the contractor an opportunity to work on his price while we're doing the first phase, and then talk about a budget or...
Change order.
Change order amount then. But let him know, we're, we're aware that concrete has come down.
Okay.
About 18%.
Okay.
I gave you that number to give to him.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah. Yeah, Patrick?
Okay.
It would seem to me that, that the contractor onsite would, would be, give us a better price than just let somebody else come in and do the, the last piece of that.
Yes, sir. I, I agree with that.
I agree with the mayor that, give him the opportunity.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, we will bring an item before council in June for a change order for the, for the first phase.
After you talk to the contractor?
After I've talked to the contractor.
And you can call me?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Is it Angel Brothers?
No, sir, it is not. It is Eldorado Babe. So, Lift Station 23, last month, as we talked about Lift Station 23, we also brought capacity, buying capacity for the city of Houston. In this past month, we worked with the consultant for Lift Station 23, Lockwood Andrews Newham. They have analyzed the wet well, looking at capacity, looking at the needs of the, of the projected plant, of the projected lift station, and the, the consensus is that the wet, the wet well is large enough in its, in its existing capacity to upgrade the lift station to the size that we needed to, and working with TCEQ, since we're not upgrading the, the wet well, to be able to not enlarge the, the force main. As you may remember, there, there are two criteria. It was and, it was either/or, back when the original 23 was designed. Now, it's and. However, if we don't redo the wet well, it's still either/or. The one item that... The one item that could derail us, that we haven't been able to do yet, is we have to investigate the structural integrity of the wet well. Now, the portions that always stays underwater should be just fine. It's the portion of the wet well where you have constant water height and the part that fluctuates up and down. Where that comes into play, you may have objects, nick them, nick the concrete, it opens it up to the air, it allows the air and the water to then damage it. That may not be an issue, but that is something, before we go full and clear and look to purchase capacity, because we have the funds for Lift Station 23, that is something that we do need to investigate. So that's kind of where we're at. Where we're looking at is doing that bypass testing in this next month, so whatever path we get to June.
Are you going to go physically into the wet well?
I will.
Good.
I've been into bar screens, I've been into worse places.
Orientation.
That's it. That's it.
Just make sure you keep the bolts yourself. The lid bolts.
Yeah. So, another item that was brought before you last month were various Tech Stop items, including the proposed light at Whittaker, FM 528, some items over at Winding Way, and also at Chadwell. This afternoon, I did email our colleague over at Tech Stop, asking for an update on that. I did not receive that, however, when we meet next month, I'm sure I will have received an email, we'll be able to move forward on that.
Mayor?
Councilmember Rocky.
Patrick, would you have a standing, from here on out, on the capital items, would you just have a standing item for streets? Not the ones where you have an individual project, you're doing great on that, but just these type of items, let's just have a standing item on the capital plan, on anything that's cooking, or anything we may want to ask about?
What I can do is, just like I have an item here for Tech Stop items, I can leave Tech Stop items as we continue to work with Tech Stop on the various portions, and then also city-related, where we're doing potential studies, or traffic studies, or...
However you want to do it is fine, but let's just have a standing one, because there's just a lot of street stuff we need to talk about, so...
That is not a problem, sir.
How good?
That kind of does that.
How many slides?
How many? Yeah, fourteen, fifteen. My co-host, the planning, city planner, she has two, but I think I have the majority of them, and we'll go through these. We did present this to the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 20th, and there were several new members there, so I went more in-depth. As I go through the design criteria manual, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me, otherwise I'll give you the abbreviated version, and we'll kind of fly through. This is an example of our table of contents. What I plan on outlining are the major changes to those various items. If there are none, like under the waterline distribution, it's going to say no major changes, and we'll just keep moving, it'll last all of a second. So our first one is the graphic and design requirements. The biggest change is currently, we require MyLars. I'd say MyLars is a little bit dated. We typically get electronic files, we keep them on our server, and we file away the MyLars. Now, we're just, we're getting paper, we'll scan them in, we'll have them electronically, and they're good. The second thing is the no objection letters are good for one year. Where that differs, previously, they were good for six months, whereas your specific use permit or other things are good for a year, so they wouldn't necessarily coincide. So your no objection letter may expire, but your specific use was still good, we want to make those mirror and keep moving. Second item is our wastewater collection design requirements. Two major items on that, one, the first one is force mains, whether they be a grinder pump from an individual, or from a commercial business, or from wherever. If you have a force main and it terminates into a manhole, that manhole needs to be coated. One thing we've noticed is force main means it's pressurized. Pressurized going into a concrete manhole over time does degrade the concrete outwinding of the manhole, and therefore creates issues that way. We feel that if they're the ones that are generating it, they should go ahead and coat it first time, and we did outline a couple of different manufacturers or products that do that. The second, yes, sir.
Is there a grinder pump on the ag barn?
Uh...
No, there is.
Yes, okay.
I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay.
Does that need to be coated?
By adoption, and what I'm asking for council to do is adopt this with it becoming active on July 1st. And I'll mention this towards the end, there are design modification forms. So if something of such small need, such as a grinder pump off of an ag barn, they could submit that, have it sealed by an engineer, and we, specifically me as a city engineer, would review it and on its whole. Another example would be, say, a large home. Say a fifteen thousand square foot home, ag barn home, would that fifteen thousand square foot home need to do it? There's a potential that I would look at that, look at the number of fixtures and say, yes, we would need to have a coating for that home. It would become on an individual basis, but as a general rule, it would require a coating.
Where would the burden of cost be then? On the homeowner?
Yes, sir. They would also be doing the force main to get it to there? That is just an example. Where I was going with that was that we have the ability to...
Not that I know anybody in fifteen thousand square foot house, but...
We're talking for new developments. Any existing homes, any existing facilities are grandfathered.
Okay.
So this is for a new home, a new fifteen thousand square foot home that's going in that can't gravity to align, and they're going to put in their own force main, then if they plan to tie in a manhole, they would have to look at that. But if council doesn't like that, that provision can be removed.
Yes, sir. Next one is our grease trap requirements. One thing we don't currently have are grease trap requirements, so these are all new.
Other than commercial?
Commercial, we, as the city of Friendswood, don't have requirements. Galveston County, through the Health District, they do. So what we've tried to do is look at what they have, look at surrounding cities, and come up with what's best for the city of Friendswood. We're looking at, there is a minimum size, I want to say it's a thousand gallons, but more importantly, we have minimum detention times and maximum detention times. What we specifically looked at is, I would say probably fifteen years ago, as a water utilities engineer, looking at it, hey, bigger is better. In reality, bigger isn't better. Bigger allows you to become stagnant, so that's what we lowered, I don't want to say lowered, but put in what I think is a fair amount of one thousand gallons, looking at the minimum and maximum detention times. Minimum is thirty minutes, maximum is sixty minutes. What that allows to do is allows the solids to gravitate towards the top, allows the water to separate, and then it has to flow through, therefore capturing the solids. If you allow the water to sit in there long enough, they become diluted, and then they drop to the bottom, and it's almost like you don't have a grease trap at all, therefore down the line, creating the same issues that we have. So we do have the minimum and maximum detention times.
With your interpretation, how's it compare to the Galveston County? Mirrored or close?
I would say it's close. We also looked at Pearland, we looked at Webster, we looked at League City, they have different variations of it. I would say we're not the most stringent, we're also not the most lenient either.
Okay.
And these are for...
Councilmember Enoch.
Yes, sir.
So with the slight change of sand, if they're compliant with ours, they're automatically compliant with which requirement county?
Galveston County, offhand, I don't recall the minimum size that they require. I believe with the minimum and maximum detention times, we are mirroring what they have.
We need to make sure we don't put our builders in the laundry with their reading codes of one and not reading codes of two.
Okay. Waterline distribution, no major changes. Street paving, no major changes. Storm drainage design requirements, we worked with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, specifically with their engineer, Jared with Lens Engineering, several months ago, to line all those up. Our calculation for design volumes would mirror exactly what they have proposed. Where it changes from today in this has more to deal with the standard hydration method, and for acreage, less than a hundred acres, and is mainly looking at less than five. Less than five, you can go in and say, without doing any type of study, without doing anything, our detention requirements are point five acre feet per acre. What we're looking at is the different uses. If you're a single-family residential, and you're not putting ninety percent coverage of impervious cover, then you would be at point five, and it would go up from there depending upon if you're commercial or multifamily, depending upon what you have, depending upon what the main impervious cover would be, it would go up, I want to say up to as great as point six-five. Now, that is if you wanted to use a standard method. If you wanted to use, do a study or different methodologies for getting, you could go down, provided you proved it up with your calculations.
Didn't it used to be point three-four?
Point four-five is what I've seen.
Okay, so why not?
It is going up. But what we found, mayor, was, in a lot of the different cases, you're having commercial developments go in and use the point four-five, and ninety percent of the lots impervious cover. So we're creating, we're putting more water to the Drainage District and to Harris County Flood Control, and yet not necessarily accurately.
Well, I know from personal experience that Aubrey will send you a bill. If you have impervious coverage.
Yes, that is the attachment force, which that's not being changed, therefore we won't be going over that, unless you'd like to.
Oh, no, no. One check's enough.
Okay, you about ready? All right, so our next portion is our site development requirements. Like I mentioned before, we did go to planning and zoning, and they did have some recommended changes, and I'll let Ms. Aubrey go over some of the changes.
So the major changes in the site development section was just bringing up the list of requirements mainly for commercial development, to be in line with the requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. One good catch that the planning and zoning commissioners did make was to add the noise mitigation plan for the retail uses fifty thousand square, fifty thousand square feet and over only. The other requirement that was added was a minimum depth of ten feet for new pipelines that are installed, and those are within pipeline easements that go under our rights of way. And then there was a parking change that was made that we'll cover here in a few minutes.
Thank you, Aubrey. Aubrey, on the noise of way, but do you have a level like eighty-five decibels or fifty-five?
Yeah, the current requirements are in the chapter fifty-four of the Friendswood Code of Ordinances, and those haven't been changed. It's just that we're going to require the plan to show that they're complying with those requirements.
Okay, thank you. We saw those when you were dealing with the refrigeration units and, what is it, point four eight?
Sixty and fifty-five, or fifty-five, fifty-eight.
Councilmember Gustafson. The pipeline depth of ten feet, where did that number come from?
So that number came from a couple of different areas that we looked at. Typically, it starts from the top of the pavement. Typical water lines...
I know how to calculate the depth. I can add, you're talking about, first off, you're not talking about water or sewer pipelines, you're talking about...
No, sir, we're talking about...
Oil and gas, petrochemicals.
Where they cross the right of way.
How did you arrive at the depth of ten feet as your number to use?
Okay, so where I came from that was utilizing the ground of the street, water lines are typically at three feet below natural ground. Below that, you have your sanitary or storm lines. Storm lines in our rights of way can be as great as eight feet in depth, and the additional two feet is more of a buffer between having their pipeline go underneath our existing infrastructures or proposed infrastructures.
The existing pipelines running through the city are typically at what depth?
They can range anywhere from eighteen inches to nine feet.
Which is ridiculously low, yeah.
So we've run into other, ran into a situation today where we're not able to correctly grade our ditch, because you've got a pipeline there, and then...
Yeah, okay. Has, did, been any, what are other localities doing for regulating buried pipeline depths?
Now, I will say, some of our information came from a pipeline company, and he actually admitted that there are some regulatory agencies that require you to do fifteen, and some, like us, don't require them to do anything at all.
There are an awful lot of different things that go...
Correct.
Factoring what that depth is. I'm just...
So the reason I came up with...
Making sure we're not doing anything overly onerous, by the same token, that we're, you know, meeting all...
Right, and for the most part, as you know, they're going to be directional drilling. So directional drilling, if you're going eight feet or ten feet, it doesn't make that big a difference.
Yeah, I suppose you're right, they're not going to be open trenching anything at ten feet deep, so...
Okay. Appendixes A and B, which are attachments and figures, no significant changes. Our parking group table is where we did make some.
So staff presented some changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a combination of, you know, meetings that we have with architects who come in for development meetings, you know, local business owners wanting to do business with the city and things like that, just staff making notes over, since 2011 was the last time this was changed or updated, so we just make notes along the way of any changes that need to be made, you know, for the next update. So the first section is accommodations, it was just some minor clarifications, no changes there. We did change the title from health club under amusement recreation to fitness and recreational sports. We just try to kind of keep our titles in line with the NAICS codes and our permitted use tables, so that we can translate the parking requirements with the different uses. Health club seemed a little outdated. We added a category for automotive repair, so that category will require three parking spaces per service bay, and the service bay itself would not count as a parking space. If it's in conjunction with a gas station, the convenience store part of the gas station would be required to do the retail at four per thousand. We also added another category under educational services. For a classroom-based use would be six spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, and non-classroom-based would be ten spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. This is mainly for dance studios, gyms, karate lessons, those are all categorized under other schools and instruction in the NAICS codes, and we had no guidelines for those. Some big changes in the food service. Currently, the parking requirements for a fine or casual dining restaurant with a bar is twenty spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, and it was the same for nightclubs. Staff proposed a reduction in that, and after some discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think we came to a good compromise. So for a restaurant, the bar area only would require fifteen spaces per thousand square feet. The rest of the restaurant would just require ten spaces per thousand square feet of the gross floor area. Fast food, we're proposing to reduce from fifteen spaces per thousand to eight per thousand, and then we're adding a category for takeout and delivery only, like a pizza place, doesn't have seating, to three spaces per thousand. If you want, we benchmarked other cities, if you want those requirements, I can go over those real quick.
What I'm going to need is a little more time to digest the Appendix C.
Okay.
I really need a little more time. Can we step that to the side, move the other stuff forward, but pull that to the side tonight? I mean, that way we can meet the requirements and keep going, but I need, I'm not done digesting that yet.
Okay.
And when you're saying you're relocating the shopping center requirements?
That is in the site... That is in, in the site development section of the design criteria manual right now, and it gets overlooked a lot. So we're moving that to the parking table, and then just tweaking the gas station definition.
Okay. I'm fine with the grease traps, all the other stuff, but I want to look at this a little more, please.
Okay.
Please. Really? Okay, you don't have any critical path you're on? I'm not delaying you, because I didn't get a chance to.
That's, that's fine. We're not proposing to make it effective till July 1st, so.
Well, yeah, one of the things, we, we wanted to go ahead and get consensus to allow us to start showing different people, but if you submitted plans on June 30th, you would still be under the existing rules as of today, just like a couple of years ago when we adjusted the building code requirements. Give them a couple of months out, same July 1st implementation, so having this come on the June dockets.
And, and when we do decide, all the irons that are in the fire, been through DRCs and that are working their development review process, get them the information, because it's going to change, it could, if their project strings out, it could change their requirements.
Yeah, we've already, we've already given a couple of people heads up on that.
Would I be correct in saying that we softened?
Yes.
The parking requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, we benchmarked some other cities.
I'm, I'm looking for my old notes, and in the Chester drawers there right behind my desk, but I need to pull them out and look at what we did have, unless you've got it already.
I have the red lines. I can email this to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and I can email you the benchmark information, what the other cities require.
I'm only interested in what, what we had before.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and we took those, that was done in 2011, and those were taken from national parking standards.
Correct, I remember.
Like I said, when we benchmarked some of the other cities, we were more than double. So.
So just to clarify, you're looking at what was prior to 2011?
That's correct.
Okay. Because the red lines that we have are from the 2011 addition, so.
We went way, way back. And I don't, I don't want to cause anybody grief that's already got a, a project planned.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, we're not going to do anything with it tonight on the design criteria manual.
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Gets me, gets, gives me a leg up on the agenda items for next month.
Got my attention.
So downtown district amenities for the added lightbulb requirement, what it states is you have to have a light, and you have to have a lightbulb. It doesn't specify that you have to place it towards the street. So what we've had is some of the lightbulbs turning towards their parking lot and not towards, towards the street, which is where it would illuminate the, the walking path as it's intended. So if, if a developer wanted to have a two-head, one towards their parking lot and one towards the, towards the sidewalk, that would be allowed, but you'd at least need to have it on the sidewalk.
What about D?
Qualified streetlights, no major changes.
No changes.
No, actually, I don't think there are any changes.
Okay. None?
None.
Okay.
None on those. I do want to make note, the culvert driveways policy, the traffic control sign policy and the streetlight policy were just internal policies and were never incorporated in the design criteria manual and never formally adopted by ordinance by city council. So what, these three items would become part of that. Culvert and driveways policy talks about the maximum width, talks about if you wanted to, if you have an existing ditch and you wanted to fill in your ditch with culverts, what the spacing is on your inlets, so that's what F would do. G, the traffic, traffic control sign policy gives you an avenue of, for stop signs where they're, where they're warranted, if you feel like there's one needed and there's not. It gives the criteria, gives, you know, specifically what we're looking for when we investigate. Same thing with the streetlight policy.
Do you, on, on F, do you give them a, do we have a list of contractors to refer people to?
I don't have a list.
Okay, so we don't, we don't even get involved in that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, like I said, proposed adoption date, July 1st. We'll come back with, with some additional, additional adjustments, or wait to hear from you on the June agenda.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Okay.
I'm going to move right now. Yeah, I want to do that. I want to do A first, because that's. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, sir.
You done with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're done with him?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, normally we'd go into executive session, but I'm going to ask council to stick with me to do 8A, presentation and appreciation of Friendswood High School media interns. And I think somebody else is going to help me. No?
Thank you.
I thought, yeah, I thought you were going to, maybe I was missing Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor, over here behind me, and council and members of the public. For the last two semesters, the spring and then last fall, we had the pleasure of having four Friendswood High School senior, all class of 2017.
I'm a junior.
Except one, and as media interns. And they've not only operated, learned and operated the equipment here, they've done video presentations, including the library opening, including San in the Park, including the, the other events that we've had in the city, including the dog park grant program. If you are a viewer of the PEG channel, you may have seen these a number of times, and Katie Malloy, who is the junior in the group, is the on-camera presence for that. And then as editors and as camera people are Dylan, Josh, and from the UK is Jordan. So, so we wanted to. So they've been, they've been very successful in the work they've done and the learning that they've, they've achieved here, and it's been a great help to me as well. So we asked if the mayor would recognize them and give them a token of the city's appreciation for their internship program.
Which two did library? Was you? We got a good time. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. If we can get the four students to stand here and the mayor in between, Aubrey will get an opposed picture of the four, of the five people.
I'm not the tallest one. Yeah. The tallest is short. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When we were opening the library, those kids did some, some random interviewing with me, and I was, I was very impressed with not only their video, but their questions.
This program is worse.
Jeff, is this our first, now, we've had this program for how, how long now?
It's the first year.
First year, okay. Excellent. All right, we're going to convene into executive session. Let me read it first, though. Closed executive session in the executive conference room adjacent to council chambers of city hall. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. See anybody wanting to say anything? Okay. Council make a meeting in the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.071. Consultation with attorney regarding pending litigation. Robert J. Bertram in the City of Friendswood. Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney regarding pending claims. Olson and Olson. And Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding potential litigation arising from pending zoning change application, Verizon Wireless. And Section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We're so convened. Okay, Directors Association, 2016 Achievement of Library Excellence Award by Rebecca Poole.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Poole. I'm the library director in Deer Park. I'm here as a former officer with the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, and I'm here to present the Friendswood Public Library with the 2016 Achievement of Library Excellence Award. The, this award is given to the 548 libraries in Texas, only 43 received it last year. So it is somebody, it says something about a library that they have met all 10 categories that are required to be considered a library of excellence in the state, and in this case, I was, Mary and her, her staff did it while being under construction. So they managed to keep their standards up and their doors open while at the same time putting up with all the dust and all of the headaches of being in, under renovation and expansion. So one of the, a couple of statistics were that the Friendswood Library hosted 114 cultural and educational programs and classes to 1,411 adults. They had 24,525 juvenile, tween, and young adults in attendance at programs and reading club in 2016, and they performed 165 outreaches to over 10,000 students at local daycares, schools, providing early literacy and reading skills. So as you can see from, those are just a few of the things that highlights from the award that was recognized by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. So this time, I'd like to present Mary with the award. Thank you, Rebecca, and thanks to the council for your support of the library during this time. We, the community appreciates you.
Mary, just say what you get out of that.
I know. Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, special presentation of the Five Star Spirit Award, Roger.
I have the pleasure each quarter of presenting the Five Star Spirit Award to one of our employees, and the recipient for the first quarter of 2017 is Patrick Donard. I just heard someone say that up front. Patrick is the Director of Public Works Department, as well as our city engineer, much to Murad Kabiri's delight. He began working for the city in August of 2014, and either time flies when you're having fun, or it gets fast, goes by faster as you get older, because that doesn't seem very long ago. Patrick received a nomination from coworkers as well as recognition from several citizens. One of the coworkers stated that from day one, he's taken the time to try and get to know the employees as individuals. And that's something that's very important and something that we try to instill in all of our supervisors and senior staff especially. He's worked hard to instill a sense of family and is always very open and accessible to all the employees. Residents have taken the time to write, expressing thanks for hard work done by employees from the Public Works Department on the drainage project. Now, the resident wrote about a quick response from a water main break, and another following work near his home road. We have great city maintenance people who work hard for this community, and from FISD, thanking Patrick and his staff for the after-hours work on an issue near Westwood School, and how the progress on the project was frequently communicated to the school district, allowing them to minimize the impact to staff and students. Now, Patrick would be the first to, I think, say that many of these compliments are simply to acknowledge the good work done by Public Works employees. But I would say that rarely does good work happen accidentally, and rarely does it happen without the proper leadership in place. Patrick's actions certainly exemplify the attributes of the Five Star Spirit Award, and we're proud to present him this award tonight. Before I do that, I want to recognize Patrick, if you'll come on up and bring your right hand with you. Patrick's got his family with him tonight, his wife Andrea, Ryan, Dylan, and his daughter Carlin. So Patrick, on behalf of the staff in City of Friendswood, congratulations.
Let's get a picture, and I'll turn the news for you. That's your grandchild, right?
Patrick?
Thank you very much. Roger, council, I'm, I'm very appreciative of this award. It doesn't come from just one day or just one person's action. I want to start off by thanking my wife Andrea, already lost her. My daughter Carlin and her two much younger brothers. For those of you, you don't know me, I wanted to test the waters. As an engineer, you want to prove your theories, so after 17 years, that's when I wanted to have two more. So hence the, the great age difference. But I do have a great staff at Public Works. We, Renee and I, Renee is my right-hand man, he thinks there's a lot of things, we, we finish each other's sentences, which sometimes good, sometimes not so good. But on a day-to-day basis, we're out in the field a good chunk, and Maggie and Phyllis, they watch, watch the hen house while the roosters are gone, make sure everybody plays nicely. And we have a great group of superintendents, Michael, who's here, Steve, David, and some, and some great guys that work at Public Works. So I'm very blessed to have this position. It does seem like just yesterday that I started when Murad was introducing me to y'all back in August of 2014. Time goes by very fast. Very thankful to be here at City of Friendswood. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
I did forget George, and I don't know how I forgot George, since he's working very much on the design criteria and the capital improvement program.
And he wore the Friendswood Haskell Mustang blue.
Mustang blue, he just, he just blended right in.
I think for the next item, Cindy's going to be coming up, so Cindy, if you want to come ahead, and while she's coming, we're going to have some special things happening soon as well, but I wanted to recognize Cindy's contributions. She will be retiring soon from the city, and I think she was seven when she started because she, this was before child labor laws, I'm sure. She has been here 32, 33, 34? Almost 32 years. So when you work for any city that long, you know the ins and outs. She grew up here. I won't make her a speech far, or even ask her to make a speech, but I wanted to publicly recognize her in this meeting for the great work she's done for many, many years. So Cindy, thank you. So Cindy, thank you.
I want to go ahead and introduce Paula Lowe, she's with Batilla Brown Hill, and she's going to deliver our financial report, since that y'all should have already received.
Thank you Cindy. And I myself have worked with Cindy for a great number of years as well. And to say that, I mean, the city is using, losing a great employee, but she's off to explore other adventures, and I want to congratulate her on that as well. As Cindy mentioned, I'm Paula Lowe with Batilla Brown Hill, and I'm here today to discuss with you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2016. On page one of this document, you will find our independent audits report. And basically what this report says is that we have audited the accompanying financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as generally accepted auditing standards. And those standards require that we plan to perform the audit to obtain a reasonable assurance that these financial statements are materially correct. And we have rendered an unmodified opinion, and an unmodified opinion is the highest opinion that can be rendered, and is known as a clean opinion to most individuals as well. So I want to just point out a couple of items within the Comprehensive Annual Report to you. So if we could turn to page 21 of the documents, there you will find the balance sheet for the governmental funds. In particular, if we can focus on the general fund, it's the main operating fund of the city of Friendswood. And as you can see on the balance sheet, at the end of the year, the total fund balance for this particular fund was approximately $13.8 million. And unassigned fund balance for the general fund was almost $10 million, but it was approximately $9.8 million. And as you can see, the remaining portion of the fund balance was either assigned for particular items in regards to maybe outstanding purchase orders, or other projects that were planned by the city, and to be used with existing fund balance. And also, you'll find, the next column over, is the bond construction fund, and any bond proceeds that, from issuance of bonds, goes into this particular fund. And at the end of the fiscal year, you can see the ending fund balance of approximately $7.5 million. Flipping over to page 23, there you will find the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. And for the general fund, there was a slight increase in fund balance for the general fund of almost $200,000. And the bond construction fund had an increase in fund balance of approximately $1.6 million. And this increase was primarily related to the issuance of bonds. And so with that issuance of bonds, a lot of bond funds were also expended during the year. So I think the numbers that you're seeing here within these financial statements are what you would expect, and what you have been looking on, looking at on a monthly basis as well. On page 25 and 26, you'll find the Statement of Net Position for the proprietary funds. And the Water and Sewer Fund, at the end of the fiscal year, had a net position of approximately $38.7 million. And that net position that you're looking at for this particular fund as well, includes all of the capital assets and long-term liabilities wells, as well. But you can see the unrestricted portion of net position for this particular fund was approximately $10 million at the end of the fiscal year. And on page 27, you will find the revenues and expenses for the Water and Sewer Fund as well. Total revenues were approximately $11.3 million, with operating expenses being almost $8 million. And as you move farther along, you see the change in net position was an increase of $400,000 for this particular fund. Again, I think this is information that's pretty, that's consistent with what you've been seeing throughout the year as well. And with that, I mean, that's part of the internal controls and processes the city has in place, in order for you to get timely information as well. And those processes that they have allow you to get accurate information, too. One of the things that you might remember that the city did throughout the year, issued a couple of refunding bonds, and did issue some, current money as well to spend on projects. And on page 47 of the notes to the financial statements, you will find information about the refunding bonds. And in particular, you will see, as a result of the refunding, two sets of refunding bonds that were done in the current year for fiscal year 2016. You can see that there was a cash flow increase as a result of this refunding of approximately $2.4 million for one set of bond refundings, and the other ones approximately $1.8 million. So, there's quite a few bond issuance there, but I think all of it was to the benefit of the city, one, saving cash, and also as well, enabling the city to do projects for the citizens. Throughout the rest of the reports, in particular, there will find the General Fund Budget Actual on approximately, beginning on page 68. And if you look through this budget actual document for the general fund, you will see that, you'll see positive variances there. In regards to expenditures, you will notice that majority of the line items that you look at, expenditures did not exceed what the budget was. So that goes to, attributable to the staff of the City of Friendswood as well, and making sure that expenditures are staying in lines with the budget. Throughout the remaining of the document, you will also see the statistical section, and that provides you unaudited information. And some of the information was derived from previous CAFRs, so it was audited at that point in time. But there's also additional information in here as well, to provide you trend information. And a lot of times, a lot of the users of the report always seem to go to this particular session, section, just because it does provide information over a 10-year span. And it's actually one of my favorite parts as well. But, this is just a brief overview of the, the CAFR that you see here. There's several pages within this particular document. And this document being presented to you today, there's a lot of work, and throughout the year, that goes in, into this, not even from ourselves, but also, I would say, the city staff. And they do a great job, and we appreciate everything that they have done throughout this audit process as well. I'm here to entertain any type of questions that you might have, too.
We're good, thank you very much.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I want to thank Paula and the firm. The last couple of years, our audits have been less than smooth, getting through the, the field work because of our new software. And they've been very patient with us, and we appreciate that. But I wanted to add something, in case you're asking, how much general fund, where's our fund balance, our working capital? As of right now, the, does this include the budget amendments tonight? Okay, well, it's close enough. Right now, with our, our general fund, we're at 2.6, about the 90, and after everything we've done this year, and 2.7 on the water sewer side.
Cindy, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item 10, Communication from the Public, is there anybody? To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager, or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Well, Lynda, you don't have any cards, do you? Is there anybody that would like to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 10, this going? Annual Report from Keep Friendswood Beautiful Chair Sherry Goen.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. My name is Sherry Goen, I am chairperson of Keep Friendswood Beautiful. We have Jeff put together a visual for us, so hopefully that will go while I'm speaking. We've done a lot of interesting and new things were initiated this year. We've had a great year, and some of the things that are new to Friendswood that we've developed are a project with Friendswood Rotary and Heritage Gardeners to create a Monarch Butterfly Gardens around the city. We just did one at the Rotary Pavilion, filling the bed with nectar plants and milkweed. We're working in partnership with a nationally-known Monarch Butterfly expert, and she's helping us design a plan for other areas around Friendswood. As you are aware, Keep Friendswood Beautiful incorporated the Parks Board last year, and we picked up some additional duties. Time and effort was spent this past year overseeing the completion of the new bridge connecting Stevenson and Old City Park. The new dog park was a very exciting event to get started. The Lake Friendswood Project completion, and the new basketball courts at Centennial. Friendswood has a wonderful park system that is well-known throughout this area, and the city and the council are commended for your park stewardship. The Keep Friendswood Beautiful Beautification Matching Grant last year was presented to Falcon Ridge, HOA, for their work on the medians. We also initiated a welcome bag project for Friendswood newcomers. The bag contains information about city services, recycling programs, KFB, and city events. Our second annual photo contest is underway, and we have had some beautiful pictures submitted, showing Friendswood at its finest. We hosted Schools Out for Summer Concert as part of the city's Concert in the Park Service Series last year, featuring the world-renowned Vocal Trash with their recycling message. We will host the concert again this year on May 12th in Stevenson. Vocal Trash is returning, and if you've never seen this group perform, you have certainly missed out. New banners and signs have gone up this spring, giving a distinctive look to the downtown area. Median work has been completed by Tax Doc, and they have added a nice, naturalized look to the downtown. The 2351 medians are again beautiful, and provide an aesthetically pleasing entry to Friendswood. These were huge projects for all concerned, and I want to thank everyone for their patience in seeing these projects through to the end. On May 6, we are hosting a composting workshop at the library for interested citizens, and we're giving participants a composting bin. KFB continues to accommodate citizens with events that have gone on for many years. The Fall Hall, the Spring Sparkle, the FIGI Educational Workshops, the Tree Giveaway, and Santa in the Park. I cannot say enough about the impact that Friendswood Parks and Recreation Department has on the success of Keep Friendswood Beautiful. The dedicated staff is always available to offer guidance and a helping hand. I often marvel at how they manage to keep up with all that they have to do to offer the best of amenities and programs for the citizens of this community. James Tony is an excellent leader, and surrounds, excuse me, and surrounds himself with knowledgeable group like Michael, Kimberly, Heather, Katie, and Gary, and his crew. I want to thank John Scott for his input as council liaison this year, and Rhonda Neal of Planning and Zoning for her service to the board. Both provide valuable insight for us when making decisions and planning events. I would also like to thank Jeff Neuford for his help in promoting KFB through the media, for the many pictures he takes at our events. Thank you, Michael. And for helping with this presentation. I would also like to thank you, the council members, for supporting our efforts with a very generous budget, and the leadership that allows KFB to reach its goals. I am honored and privileged to serve as chairperson of Keep Friendswood Beautiful, and work with excellent board members and volunteers, who logged 6,092 hours of their time last year serving the citizens of Friendswood. Thank you.
Tell the rest of your members how much we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
City Manager's Report.
Sherry, thank you very much. Nearly 7,000 volunteer hours, incredible. Sherry mentioned, first item I was going to, so I'll briefly report on our Spring Sparkle event. Waste Connections pulled off almost 100 tons of waste. In addition to that, shredded document shredding destroyed six tons of paper. So it is a very, very popular event, one that couldn't happen without our KFB volunteers and Parks and Rec staff. Waste Connections cleared the air at JST Credit Union and Sonic. At the end of this month, Monday, May 29th at 10 a.m., we'll have our annual memorial day ceremony here at the Veterans Memorial adjacent to Friendswood City Hall. The ceremony this year will feature special guest speaker, Colonel Terry Burks, who is in the Air Force, and also is a retired NASA astronaut. So we encourage all of you to attend. It's a great ceremony every year, a great night, and we appreciate the work that goes in putting that together. Sherry also mentioned one of our concerts in the park that are coming up. They begin this Friday, May 5th, and every Friday night, through the months of May and June. They do take place at Stevenson Park in the gazebo, beginning at 7 p.m. and ending about noon. Sherry mentioned Vocal Trash, and they are, they're a lot of fun to watch and listen to. So, plan to come out and join us for those, those concerts. With all the fun, this is also a time of year that, well, we begin thinking about hurricane preparation. Other parts of the states have their tragedies and bad weather with tornadoes and earth, with hurricanes. This next week, May 7th through 13th, is recognized as Hurricane Preparedness Week. So we're encouraging the public to make plans for what they'll do before and after a storm, double-check their emergency supply kits, make sure they're ready as best they can be. Our emergency management staff are getting ready, and have been receiving training, as they typically do, attending National Hurricane Conference, as well as the Texas Emergency Management Conference. The Office of Emergency Management will also be hosting the annual City Hurricane Preparedness Meeting, so if you're attending, typically show up, any other council members would like to come, we're welcome. Takes place May 5th. Our contractors, school districts, service utilities, other cities, will all come and report on their preparedness activities, and it's a good event every year, to hear what's going on. And finally, for the public, there are two hurricane preparedness meetings that have been scheduled at the Friendswood Library. The first is scheduled on June 1st at 10 a.m., and the second is scheduled in June 3rd. Sherry also mentioned the KFB Facebook photo contest, so I will only say that the funds are accepted until April 17th on May 5th, so approaching the end, we need to accept this.
Thank you very much, Roger. Item 12, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding A Lease Purchase Agreement for Replacement of Computer Hardware/Software. Do I hear motion? I'll make the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Supposed to be unanimous. 13, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approving the Friendswood Public Library's Long-Range Strategic Plan as Required by the State of Texas for Accreditation.
Most approved.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Closure of Mandel Bridge. I'll make the motion to approve. Do we have a second? I'll make this, I'll make the second for discussion purposes. Go ahead, Councilman.
Mayor, I'd like for the staff to talk to the canal company, as well as Tax Doc, to see if they would be willing to help us bear some of the cost to replacing this bridge. It's going to be pretty expensive, from what I understand, to repair.
Well, what did you say, $400,000? Well, we can't repair it anymore, we have to replace it. It's not holding nails. So 500 to 750, that's a little, little bit of money. Councilmember Gustafson?
And this is probably a good question for Mo, but how many cars travel on this bridge every day?
200 vehicles per day.
200 vehicles per day.
So it's a half a million. Are there any school buses across this bridge?
There were previous to us closing it down currently.
Is there no other way for a school bus to get into that area that's accessed?
There are alternative routes, and Patrick can discuss that for school.
So depending upon which direction you're coming, if you're coming from the Tower Estates, you're pretty much in complete loop on that. If you're coming from more road, what we put in is a temporary turnaround. Go down there and pick up a few houses that are there and then come back. Does that...
I guess my point is if we're doing this so that we can pick up two or three students standing, we could buy them a car. I just, it seems like an awful lot of money to spend on a not often-used road, and there's other old, I don't think anybody's boxed in.
We're not, we're not planning on. We're gonna see if Tax Dot and the Rice Canal can take care of it, and then we'll get down to...
I mean, it's still taxpayer money, whether it's...
I understand, but then it'll get down to whether, what we're gonna do about it. Put a cul-de-sac in, turn around.
Yeah, yeah. Put gates there, or, you know, bridge out signs and...
Right.
And some ballers or something, that's fine.
So the motion now is just to close the bridge until there's...
It's already closed.
Yeah. Until we come up with a resolution.
While we pursue the Rice Canal people and Tax Dot, that is the motion. I accept the amended, you made the motion, I made the second? So I accept the amended motion that Councilman Hill... All those, any discussion? The amended motion is to pursue Tax Dot and the Rice Canal people for compensation to replace the bridge at this point. Am I correct? Your representative, Ray.
All those opposed? What is spending the money? I like it.
Resolution, Consider Impossible Action Regarding The Following. Resolution 2017-13, A Resolution Adopting A Capital Improvement. You guys can stop me anytime you want. We talked to Patrick about, I didn't want to move forward, and we... No, we didn't, and Roger said he didn't want to piece me up. Okay, so A, we're okay with.
Okay.
We'll stop you when you're ready.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a politician, right? Manual Containing A Summary Of All Proposed Projects To Be Acquired During A Five-Year Period, Cost Estimates, Method Of Financing, And Recommended Timetable For Construction, Constructing The Improvements To Be Undertaken In The City Of Friendswood, Texas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that needs discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
So this is just to say that we have a plan? This doesn't commit us to actually any of the work yet, right?
This does not address funding, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, second. Discussion. Seeing none, all, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Gustafson?
One of the unfunded projects, someone at the top of the list, and the most expensive one on here is the extension of Brittany Bay Boulevard, Phase 1, at an estimated $6.8 million by 2021. That's the only road that's on this unfunded list, if I'm not mistaken.
None of the projects actually on there are funded.
Unfunded projects?
Right.
Says right here, Brittany Bay Boulevard, Phase 1, $6.8 million. It's on there.
Yes, sir.
Oh, but there's no other roads on here. That's the only road that's on there, correct?
I'm pleased.
I'm not missing something. I'm just...
This is what we discussed last month.
We discussed it, and I'm gonna discuss it in front of everybody. It's...
Okay.
Any other road like this that's ever been put in in the city, been paid for by developers, building houses along there that are requiring a road for access, and I'm just not gonna agree that this should be on the list. It's, the rest of that road, from I-45 to where it terminates in League City currently, and what bit there is in Friendswood, has all been built by developers. I checked. I'm not sure why the last little bit's gotta be paid for by the citizens of Friendswood. I'd like to remove that item.
Can we comment on that?
Sure.
We off-topic?
You have a motion and a second, and we're discussing.
Okay, we had considerable discussion at a workshop and in subsequent meetings about the five-year plan. We also had agenda items where we talked about which of these items we would go to the county and say would be our first funding if they were to pass a bond. And in all of those discussions, we approved this particular road as our top item. We haven't, we haven't said that we're gonna build it with citizens' dollar, Friendswood citizens' dollars at this point. It's just our top item, okay? In terms of these, and we've had votes on this, and we've had agreements on it. I don't see a point to reopen it and take it off.
Well, I see both. I see both y'all's points. We could wait and move forward with this next month and let it simmer a little bit.
I mean, it's an unfunded item.
I know. Hold on, he's not done. He done? No, I mean, he's still, maybe he's hands number seven. Go ahead, Councilman Scott.
Yeah, but again, it's just an item on an unfunded list. There's no, there's nothing to be resolved in this other than approving the plan that has all of these items on there, so...
Other than the priority of the item. That is correct.
Correct.
So it sounds like...
We're not voting to go forward to fund the expansion of Brittany Bay Boulevard. We're voting to approve the plan for the capital improvement project for the next five years based on feedback we've given staff over the last year. That's all we're doing.
It's establishing priorities without committing any taxpayer dollars.
Right. Go ahead.
Why would we be looking, I mean, it... Why would a road that arguably we shouldn't fund even be on a five-year capital improvement plan for the city if the city's not gonna be involved in funding it or lobbying for the funding? Yeah, I don't think that Woodland Drive or any other major road running through a new subdivision in the city, West France Boulevard, I don't think was ever on a capital improvement plan.
Councilmember Mike Foreman? I did draw a blank for that.
Introduce myself later. I would say there's good reason, Carl, to leave it on the list because we have submitted this project to the county as one of our big hitters. Now, I know we gave them a wish list for a possible bond in November, bond election, items that we would like funded. That's not to say that we're not gonna have another vote on that.
We haven't submitted it yet.
We haven't submitted it yet?
Oh, we have already.
Just recently.
Yeah.
We either have or have not. My point is, hey, if this is an item for the county as a wish list, we ought to leave it on our capital improvement plan until that plays out at least. We can always readdress it.
Councilmember Hill?
Carl, the main reason we decided on that road was because of traffic congestion on that side of town. I know you live over on the other side, but those of us that live out there realize, just like the people from Eagle Point, there is a tremendous traffic problem over there, and this may relieve some of it. I'm not saying it won't, but it may.
The other nice thing it does, Carl, is that it sends a signal to our staff, to developers, to other government agencies out there, this is something that we're interested in doing, and it is a priority of ours. Otherwise, we're left guessing. Do they want it built, do they not want it built? How do they want it built? Things of that nature.
Well, I can't agree with that statement. I can't agree with that, 'cause I've been in meetings with League City about it, and that's not 100% true. What I mean is, League City's working with developers that are building houses there, doing tours and doing special districts, and that's not 100% true that we have discussed this like that.
No, I wouldn't blindly discuss it like that. It's not how, otherwise, it's not on your plan.
So can we wait till next month on this, rather than just keep talking and filibuster it? Table, motion to table. Do I have a second? Come on. All those in favor? Table? All those opposed? So now we're gonna discuss some more? Four against, three...
Mayor, I'll call questions.
Question's been called.
Oh, the original motion?
To approve the...
So we've got a question called, so there's no more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Five-two, you guys win. Okay, B we're not gonna do, though. I'm passing. And A, B, and C ordinances, Councilman Scott pointed out something. D, we could probably vote on with the election. There's first readings on here, and one council member will not be here at the next meeting. For sure.
So I would ask that we move these to the June meeting.
And I don't have a problem with it. Does anybody else?
It's council's prerogative as to what they wanna do.
May I ask you a question? But all of them would have to require two readings, right?
Yeah, and not be here. Yes, you're correct in your question.
So my point in the matter is that you would have half, the first reading voted on by, and the second reading voted on by potentially a different, at least one different councilman. I think it's fair to the applicant or whoever that...
As long as there's no timing issues on it, I don't have...
Yeah.
That's the only comment I was gonna make. We haven't confirmed from the applicant that they can wait an additional month on any of them. Now, Windermere's lasted two years, so I don't think that...
We got Windermere, we got the...
The Church on Whispering Pine and then the Pond Senior Facility off of 2351. So they haven't indicated to staff whether or not they're on any time crunch, but that was the only comment I was gonna offer.
They do first and second reading in June?
We cannot. But if council's desires to postpone it a month, that's perfectly okay. I just...
I was honoring his request.
Well, again, for me, it just seemed like it made sense that we wouldn't have an overlap of two, potentially two different council makeups to voting.
We do have that for trees.
Okay, so B. On B?
B?
Yes, sir.
Will you let us vote on B?
You can vote on all of them if you choose.
Would it be okay if we voted on them? Because the contract expires there.
Sure.
There you go. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve B.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you wanna read it?
D or B?
B, like boy, the pond. Seeing no discussion on this?
Do you wanna read it?
First reading of an ordinance changing the prior zoning classification of a tractable land consisting of 4.6212 acres from business park BP to single-family residential planned unit development, but property known as the pond. Who did? I'm drawing a blank. I made the motion, he made the second. I remember that much.
People are gonna push A off.
We're going too fast?
Hold on, hold on, we have a critical lookout of Arnold here.
No, I just, my understanding from the discussion was that you were comfortable doing A as well. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't necessarily or intentionally pass over that for some other reason.
Something else we talked about.
As to those that you do not want to take action on tonight, our recommendation is that you table those instead of just not taking action.
I'd just leave C.
And the Church is here tonight, which we can ask them as well if they're...
Is that gonna hurt y'all? You want to abstain from all three of them? Okay.
Excuse me, point of order.
Councilmember Rocky?
How does Councilman Enox abstain? He has no financial interest in these, and he's sitting here in the meeting, and he's required to...
That's a good point.
I'd have to look at your charter. I don't recall if there was a specific requirement in your charter that mandated, Mr. Hill's suggesting, the... If you really want the pure legal answer on this, I gotta take a look at your charter real quick.
You have to vote if you're here.
I think that's correct.
Again, I just, we can vote on all of them.
Okay, thank you.
I just didn't think it would, you know, I mean, I didn't think it was fair for an applicant to have one council vote and then a brand-new potential council come in and change their vote for whatever reasons. So vote on all of them.
Good.
I'm gonna undo my motion to approve, and you undo your second. We'll move on to...
At least slicker than this.
First reading of an ordinance approving vacation of a public right-of-way. Do you hear a motion? I make the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? B, ordinance 2017-12, first reading of an ordinance changing the prior zoning classification of a tractable land consisting of 4.6212 acres from business park to single-family planned but property known as the pond. Do I hear a motion? Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I looked over this. I think this is a beautiful, beautiful piece of property what they're going to do. But, and Councilman Foreman and I have been working on the volunteer farm thing, and there's quite a bit of information about senior living expenses and how they impact our EMS services. And I wonder if, if, if the applicant would be willing to discuss this with us at some point in time later. I don't want to hold up the vote or anything, but I just, I just wonder about adding another senior facility at this point in time.
Fifty-five and over? Right, I get it now. At some point in time? That being right now? Is that being right now?
No, no, no.
Oh, you said some point in time.
I just want to ask, make sure he's on the speaker here.
Okay. Thank you, Sal.
Would you be, as we complete our work on our EMS system and sometimes the impact of some of the senior centers, would you be willing to discuss with us some options for this particular property?
Yes, we are aware of the issues that you have brought up in the previous session, and we are willing to discuss it.
Thank you very much. May I ask them a question, that's all? Let me, would you like to...
I know, but most folks in here, I guess, don't know what the question was. There wasn't any. Can we explain what the issue is?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, okay.
Council approved a subcommittee a couple of months ago to look at our fire and EMS services and the future of how we're gonna provide them. And Councilman Foreman and I have been on the team along with some city staff and some volunteers, and we've been looking at it. And the EMS side, the... And, and the, um, on the EMS side, the, um, and so I say this because I am in this age group myself, but, uh, people over sixty, you know, have a bigger impact on EMS services. There's more calls, and, and the calls can be more severe and require more of the service. And, uh, so as we go through this, we have, we have a number of, um, senior living facilities of different types in the city, everything from fully assisted to completely independent, and, and they're all very well-run, and we like having them there, but we're struggling with how to provide that service, and so as we, as we come forward ideas, I just wanted to see if the applicant is willing to, to work with us on that, um, as he goes forward with his property.
We're gonna have this discussion with all the senior living...
Yeah, you aren't the only one, yeah.
Right, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to go talk to all of them, because they're a heavy hitter in the, uh, services, EMS services here in the city.
Yes, we are, we are, we're, and we have internally discussed, you know, how to supplement the type of service.
Councilman Hill?
Yeah, uh, as most people on council are aware, seventy percent of our EMS are already paid, and it won't be two years till it'll be a hundred percent, so this is really not an issue. The voluntary EMS in Friendswood will be going away, and I mean, it's just, uh, I'm very sorry about it, because I just want the pride things in Friendswood, but, uh, it's just younger generation people don't have the time, and they can't afford to volunteer, and that's why we have seventy percent paid now, and I think Mike and Steve both will say, if we get two years more volunteer, we'll be doing good. So I don't think it's an issue, it'll be a year before it gets open anyway.
Uh, it, it, I agree with Councilman Hill, uh, but it's, the question is how to pay for it, at any point, so, and, and we're not, we're not placing any requirements on this, we just wanna have a discussion, that's all.
Yeah, I know, well, I agree, it's gonna be a big discussion. Thank you, Sal.
Thank you.
So we got a motion, second, done, discussed it, all those in favor? All those opposed? First reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for attractive parcel containing one point eight four seven five acres located at one oh four Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from SFR to downtown district, do I hear motion?
I approve.
Which one of you wants to be second? Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? D, budget amendment, twenty seventeen sixteen, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment number eight to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen, do I hear motion? Second. Motion, second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. Communication from the mayor and council members. Councilmember Enoch, I'll let you go first, since it's your last time. Oh, okay, you can still go first. Okay. Councilmember Rocky?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes, I, uh, I attended the funeral last week of a dear old friend named J.R. May, and Roger May was the last guy to operate the last fig plant in Friendswood, and I was fortunate enough to work for him, he taught me more in four years than I ever learned in any other period of my life, uh, back then, you, there was nobody to call to get anything repaired, we had to fix it, we had a pair of, a pair of St. Prada, and he taught me that there is always a way to get something done. But anyway, uh, I just wanted you to know that, uh, I have a lot of respect for this man, and I will miss him.
Councilmember Gustafson? Councilmember Scott, and then the mystery council member.
Uh, the only thing I have to say is, uh, this weekend is, uh, election day, which means that I will not be watching my son defend his state bass fishing title, so, uh, I wish my son and his partner all the best, uh, go out and win state again, and five thousand dollars more in scholarship money. Yeah, you could. I'm sure you would.
Well, I just, I just re-echo what we said about Cindy Edge, we're gonna miss you, Cindy, uh, you already got the standing ovation, so we're, you know, we won't stand up again if you don't mind, but, but I wanna thank you for your service to the city, I asked her a few minutes ago what, uh, day she was retiring, she couldn't remember the day, but she said it was a Thursday.
It's not this Thursday.
It's not this Thursday, it's a good thing, so, we're gonna miss you. Stick around as, stick around as many Thursdays as you can, Cindy.
Consent agenda, do I hear motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. We can go into close the executive session. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics, council may convene in the executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to section five five one dot oh seven four, personnel matters to deliberate, the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the public officer or employee city attorney. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to us about this? Okay. So, item twenty-one, consideration of possible action regarding the city's legal services, I make a motion that we select the city attorney currently from Angleton, Mary Kay?
Yeah, Angleton, Brazoria, close enough?
Angleton, isn't it? Right.
Live in Brazoria, okay. He works in Angleton, okay.
You flew over real fast. You didn't...
That's okay, 'cause you don't know the name anyway.
Just... They were picking on Mike tonight.
And I'd like, uh, council to give me authorization, to make a motion, give me authorization to negotiate the contract, make the motion. Any discussion? We're good. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're convened, or adjourned.